Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If we take our seats, ready to start our meeting? All right. Welcome, everyone. City Clerk, let's get my schedule here. Okay, we'll call our meetings order. Road call, City Clerk.
Commissioner Castillo?
I'm here.
Commissioner Good? Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Minister Syple?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Good. Can we all stand for a pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge of allegiance.
United States of America into the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. We have an evening of presentations tonight. What a crowd. Before I start our meeting officially, does anybody know what's happening this Saturday?
Pines.
It's our birthday. Pepper Pines birthday. How old are we? Thank you. How old are we? As old as the mayor. Anyway, we're gonna have a great day. Please come out and participate. Their 63rd birthday, and it's gone by like nothing. So we've had a lot of good fun, so please come out. All right, I'm gonna read a proclamation declaring April 28th as Arbor Day in the city of Pembroke Pines. Okay. Whereas the city of Pembroke Pines has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation for 30 consecutive years, and whereas the city encourages the practice of Florida-friendly landscaping methods that are sustainable alternatives to conventional landscaping, providing guidance on low-impact, environmentally-friendly, science-based landscape practices that use less water and reduce pollutant loading to Florida waters. And whereas the city desires to continue to increase tree canopy throughout the city, and whereas the city staff works with the residents of our city to utilize the right tree, right place, practices as recommended by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas trees bring the natural elements and wildlife habitats into the urban surroundings, all of which increase the quality of life for our community. And whereas trees aid in moderating temperature, cleaning the air, and producing life-giving oxygen. And whereas studies have shown that spending time surrounded by trees and green space reduces stress. Did you know that? That is often in our daily lives. Trees and landscapes soften the appearance of structures and streets, provide noise-reducing buffers and shade throughout the city. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines will continue the commitment to urban forestry through the regular updating of our tree preservation provisions within the Land Development Code and Natural Day Observance. So now, therefore, I frank Seoretis, but authority vested me as the mayor of the greatest city in the world, and in accordance with the National Arbor Day, hereby proclaim April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Pembroke Pines.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of our Arbor Day celebration, Mayor, the second item on the agenda tonight is our Arbor Day poster contest. So while that happens, Mayor, we're gonna leave those down. We'll bring up the kids.
Can everybody see the Arbor Day presentation? I did gentle.
All right, Mayor. So, in celebration of Arbor Day, the city holds a poster contest annually with the elementary schools in our city. The city, this year, seven schools participated in our contest: Pines Charter FSU Campus, Pines Charter East Campus, Pines Charter West Campus, Pines Charter Central Campus, Pembroke Pines Elementary, Pasadena Lakes Elementary, and Panther Run Elementary. As part of the contest, the students, they created posters to celebrate Arbor Day, and we'll bring those up on the slide in just a moment. The city received 35 submissions from kindergarteners, first grade, second, third, fourth, and fifth. Our city's environmental advisory board judged the posters, and currently the posters are on display inside the lobby of the Great Hall. What we'd like to do now is to bring up the students with their, with their award, so that we can take a quick picture with the mayor, and I will go through, while that's happening, the slideshow on the front. So if you've got an award today for the poster contest, come up here. Let's get a quick picture.
Don't be shy.
Don't be shy. All right, everybody. Let's turn around and open up our awards. Let's go. Come on, come on over, come on over. Everybody, let's get a little bit tighter. Come over here, come on guys, come on.
Let's celebrate Arbor Day.
All right. So while this is happening, everybody, you can see some of their artwork going across the slideshow right now. Like I said, we've got winners for every age group, first and second, and then some honorable mentions. But students, let's show everybody your award, and we'll get yours in a second. Let's turn around and let's get a picture with the mayor.
Congratulations.
Nice job, nice job, guys. Thank you.
All right, congratulations again. Our next presentation, the winners of the Pembroke Pines, I'll present certificates of recognition to the city of Pembroke Pines She-Rose. So our first nominee is Dr. Jocelyn Rodriguez. Would you come forward? Vice Mayor, could you help me with the certificates?
Do you have them all?
Hi, congratulations. Sandra Ramirez? Andy Brodessen? Hello. How are you? How are you? These are our certificates. Okay, Jenny, Jenny Venkamo can't make it, but she sends her thanks for the honor of being able to attend. Rita DiMartino? Marie DiMartino. You're the mother? She's young. And her daughter will accept the prize, will accept the trophy and the award. Congratulations. Okay, huh, no introduction needed here. Sergeant Jennifer Martin? Arlene Torres Abreu Palacio? She's here? Oh, there she comes. All right? All right. Let's all give them a great presentation, great hand. Congratulations. Vice Mayor, I know you want to say something?
I do, Mayor, and, and I know you wanted to. We've got a lot going on tonight, but I would, I would like to ask each of you, there's something on your certificate that says who and why you were selected. So I don't know if you've seen that yet or not. You have not.
A little surprised to me. I had no idea.
That's what it's supposed to be. So if you would take the microphone and read, please.
I wish I had my glasses up, but. You'll do it. Okay. As, certificate of recognition, Arlene Torres Abreu Palacio, as being selected as a 2023 She-Rose. Arlene has been a guidance counselor in the Broward County Public School System for many years, helping students academically and emotionally. Arlene lost her son Ryan Abreu tragically to suicide in 2014. Arlene endowed the Ryan Abreu Memorial Scholarship in his name at Broward College Academy, where he entered, where he attended school. Thank you. She also co-chairs the Share We Care Grief Support Group of Pembroke Pines for parents who have lost children.
Hereby granted, Sergeant Jennifer Martin is being selected as a 2023 She-Rose. Sergeant Martin has been a Pembroke Pines police officer for nearly 20 years. She's achieved many accomplishments within the police department as well as outside of the department. She also volunteers for an organization called Special Compass, which helps those with disabilities navigate life.
Certificate of recognition is hereby granted to Sandra Ramirez as being selected as a 2023 She-Rose. Ms. Ramirez is being recognized for her selfless efforts she provides as a clinical social worker in the Spinal Cord Injury and Disorders Unit at the Miami VA Healthcare System.
Dr. Jocelyn Rodriguez is being selected as a 2023 She-Rose. She has demonstrated the highest skill and professional achievement in professional and personal life, and has won the respect and admiration of her peers, her patients, and her family.
Annie Brodessen as being selected as the 2023 She-Rose, as being selected. Mrs. Brodessen is co-director of the Kindhearted Crew Ministry at Trinity Lutheran Church in Pembroke Pines. Her vision, creativity, and relentless energy for serving those in need in Pembroke Pines has impacted thousands of lives over the past few years.
Rita DiMartino as being selected as a 2023 She-Rose. Rita was a journalist in the country of birth, Venezuela. She was a fighter and risky journalist until the persecution and threat to her family became overwhelming. At that time, she made a decision to move to the US, where she has continued in the production of news events.
And thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to have the time to hear what each one of them, why they are.
Real true honorees, let's give them all a nice round of applause. Congratulations. All right, everybody. Congratulations. All right. Thank you. Our next proclamation is to former Pembroke Pines High School student, Dallas Graziani, for his outstanding ball play helping Nova Southeastern basketball team win a division and national championship title. Is he here? There he is. Come on down. Congratulations. David. Dallas Graziani. Whereas the city of Pembroke Pines would like to congratulate Dallas Graziani, former Pembroke Pines Charter High School student, for his outstanding ball play, which helped the Nova Southeastern University Sharks win the 2023 Division II National Championship Title. And whereas Dallas, a redshirt freshman, scored 24 points and had game highs with nine assists, three steals. We need to get in the heat. Hopefully the wind tonight. He made seven of 16 shots, including a four-of-seven from a distance, and he, four of seven from a distance, and he converted on seven of six free throws. As NSU coach Jim Crutchfield exclaimed after his team won the first national title in program history, "This was storybook," wasn't it? And it was. The season at NSU Dallas earned a Defensive Player of the Week Award twice, and was an All-Tournament Player in the opening season games. All-Tournament Player in the SEC Tournament, All-Tournament Player in the Regional Games, All-Tournament Player in the Championship Game. He also holds a single-game steals record at NSU. The NSU Sharks made history by going 36-0 this season, whereas Dallas started playing basketball optimism league at five years old, and then started playing travel basketball with his brother Diamond and for the Broward County Cougars. He said, "His dad Steve, was his coach Steve, you hear?" Stand up. Congratulations. Is that your wife? Your wife? Congratulations. You had something to do with this. Okay. Dallas spent his senior year at Pembroke Pines Charter High School and played basketball under Coach Dave Raca. Some of his accolades through high school were being named part of the Fan Five of Broward County his junior and senior year. The first-team All-County is sophomore, junior, and senior years. But Sun Sentinel Player of the Year, 5A State Player of the Year, Big Eight County Tournament Champ, Big Eight MVP, and State Runner-Up. And whereas Dallas is sports management major and has a GPA of 3.21. 3.21. All four of mine didn't add up to that. Congratulations. That was a joke. He enjoys spending time with his family, Mom, Kim, and Dad Steve, and Brother Diamond. You can find him practicing basketball in his free time. He likes shooting around with his brother and playing pickup ball with his dad and brother, too. Now, therefore, I frank Seoretis, Mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, along with the city commissioners, to hereby extend the special pride to your accomplishments and our appreciation for the fine publicity you have brought to our community. Congratulations.
Yes, oh yeah. Yeah, you have to say something.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to my family. They were great. This is a great honor. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dallas.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor, Syple. I, I just want to say, I don't know for the rest of y'all sitting out there, but I have goosebumps hearing this stuff about one of our. I have goosebumps hearing this stuff about one of our, one of our Pines, uh, kids and, and what recognition, what hard work that they have brought forward and such dedication to something that they love, you know, love so much. Obviously, he, he loves it. Obviously, he's talented. Uh, obviously, he's got the right, you know, backing behind him. But when you, you were watching the, the videos that were up here, um, I actually taped those from my television set at home, watching the game. And my husband Mark is here, and we were great followers of the, of the, of the basketball team, great supporters of them. And, and we taped the whole damn game so that we could keep running it back and back and back and to watch, and to watch plays. So when you see this one right up there now, that's the end of the game. They just won. And that's, that's what looks like champions out there, and, and we're very, 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 very proud of, of what you've done, and, and thank you. Thank you, family.
Did anybody draft yet? Let me know when they do. I want a good seat. All right, now we have a great presentation. David Mitchell. 100-year birthday. Whereas David Dave Mitchell was born on April 13th, 1923, in Bayou Curran, Louisiana. And whereas David is a proud World War II veteran, having served the United States Navy Air Force Division for 20 years, from June 1941 until July 1961. Dave went to boot camp in Norfolk, Virginia, and was stationed all over the world. David proudly wears his veteran hat wherever he goes. And whereas David Mitchell married Adele Kelly on August 6th, 1943, that was the year I was born. They had three children, David, Monica, and Paul. Whereas David and Adele had 56 wonderful years together before she passed in February 1999. And whereas after the war, David worked as a manufacturer representative of computers and other hardware items. And whereas David's boyhood dream was to host an all-day Memorial Day Holiday Celebration, and on May 30th, 2022, his dream came true when he hosted the Dave Mitchell Vision Memorial Day at Colony Point. It was well-intended and loved by all. Whereas on April 13th, 2023, Dave will be honored by friends and family in celebrating his 100th birthday. And whereas David's family has 100 loving wishes in celebration tribute to his 100th birthday. You shared, you learned about living through the kindness that you've shown. You've seen many dreams and wishes to come true and feel and joy and friendships you've known. You've earned the right to this moment to observe and celebrate too, for it stands as a wonderful tribute to your remarkable life and you. Now therefore, Frank Ordis as Mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, along with the city commissioners, to hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to extend this proclamation to David Mitchell on the occasion of his 100th birthday with sincere congratulations and wishes. Congratulations, David. How are you doing? Thank you, 100. Well, David, congratulations. Your, your relatives are here. Congratulations to all of you. Come on down. You want to come down? Want to come down? No? Okay. You want to say a couple words?
Oh, thank you. It's been a wonderful time. The Lord has been greatly blessed me that I am able to enjoy every day of my life. And I just hope and pray that you too will find the joy of knowing Jesus Christ as your Savior. Thank you. Good night.
Here we go. And, and David. David will be going on a trip soon to Washington with other heroes, so have a great trip. Thank you.
You know, Mayor, I said I thought Graziani gave me goosebumps. I thought Graziani gave me goosebumps, but Mr. Mitchell gives me goosebumps, too. He's a pretty cool guy. Pretty cool guy.
All right, say your first announcement. Bye, everybody. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Uh, say your first, your agenda items to be pulled.
Yes, Mayor. Agenda item six was pulled from the consent agenda by administration.
Okay. Commissioner Castillo, did you have something to say?
Yes. I, uh, I'm going to be appointing Glenn Theobald to the Citizens Budget Commission that I, uh, created. Uh, this August, it'll be two years that it is meeting, and it's doing great work. Glenn is a, uh, a lawyer, and he is a former police officer. Indeed, he's a former general counsel and undersheriff for the Martin County Sheriff's Office. He's lived in Pembroke Pines for many years, and he swears that this is where he's going to live for the rest of his life. He and his wife absolutely love our city, and, uh, um, I had a pleasure to speak to him and to get to know him. He's a very, very capable and intelligent guy, and he has an interest in our city, and he has an interest in the finances of our city. And so I'm very happy to, uh, appoint him to that board. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, I just sent the request to the public?
No items, Mayor.
Commission order report?
None, Mayor.
Appeals of Board of Adjustment and Decisions?
No appeals, Mayor.
Announced of Board and Committee Appointments?
Commissioner Castillo just announced.
Okay. All right, I've got consent agenda one through 21. What is your pleasure?
So I'm pulling 13, Mayor.
13. Hold on.
What number?
13. 13.
Mr. And Mr. Mayor, what number, what's the consent up to 21, you said?
Item one through 21.
Through 21, right. So I'd like to pull 20?
No, 19.
One through 19.
I beg your pardon, 19.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, any other polls from item one through 19?
Seven, please.
Seven? All right. Discussion. City Clerk call a roll, please.
Mayor, may I ask who seconded?
Uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Castillo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item seven, Commissioner, uh, Schwartz.
It would be Vice Mayor Cyple on that one.
I rolled a dada to Vice Mayor, too. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
You did, you did. Thank you, Mayor. Item seven. Motion to award IFB number PSPW-23-02, replacement of roof and mechanical equipment at Southwest Village Community Center to the most responsive, responsible bidder, IES Investments LLC, in the, in the amount not to exceed 463,980, which includes a 10% owner's contingency in the amount of 42,180 and the cost of 14,200 to provide a payment and performance bond.
Second by Commissioner Schwartz. Discussion?
Yes, I just had one question, and I saw Mr. Buckland was here. Oh, there, you, you were hiding from me. Okay. The only question that I had, Mr. Buckland, was when I was looking at the, the summary, there were three, three vendors that, um, that bid. And, um, between the top, the, the lowest price and the, and the highest price, there was a difference of $206,000, $206,600. And there were only, there were just the three, uh, the three applicants, the three vendors. So, uh, my concern was because, because first off, it's not, while it's a good amount of money, it's not a huge amount of money, and for there to be that much difference between top and bottom, I wanted you to, if you could explain to me why you think that was and that, to reassure me that, that we're not taking the lowest, um, bid and we're getting not top-quality either work or material, uh, for the, for the job.
Let me say, uh, Steve Buckland Public Services, let me say that we, we do our, our due diligence to vet the, the vendors the best that we can, based on their submissions and their recommendations and their, uh, their referrals that they submit to us. Uh, as far as the difference in price, we're finding that that is becoming larger and larger as the things are going on right now. Vendors are, are overwhelmed with work, so they've got more work than they can handle, so they're picking and choosing. And lots of times they're submitting, uh, proposals, and if they don't need the work, maybe they're just saying, "You know what? I'll put out this price, and if I get it, great, and if I don't, great." Uh, that's just my opinion and what I'm feeling of the, of the market right now.
Okay.
So is that a definite answer for the difference in the, in the prices? No, but that's what we're finding to be a, a, a great factor at this time.
Okay, so then, so then I guess then my, my last question to you would be the, the IES Investments that was cho- that was, will be chosen, if, if that's what happens tonight, at their 421,800. You, you and your, and your staff are confident that, that that, that not only is that a good price, but that the workmanship and the, and the quality of product is, uh, is up to your standards, is up to what we, what we want?
We fully check with the references they provided.
Okay.
And we have, uh, and we've, uh, started a policy where every time that we, once a bid is completed, pre-award, we sit down with the vendors and speak with them about the scope of work, make sure that they fully understood what they were submitting for, and get a feel for their subcontractors, for their forces. And yes, we feel IES will be.
Oh, good, thank you. That's a good answer, so thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Schwartz? Did you have something?
No, I was just kind of.
Oh, I, I thought you said your name next. Okay. Further discussion. Hearing and call a roll, please.
Vice Mayor Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 13, Commissioner Schwartz.
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between United Way of Broward County Incorporated and the City of Pembroke Pines to participate in Mission United's Veteran-Friendly City Pilot Program. And we have Mission United here who'd like to say a few words. Come on down.
Okay. Is our second to the motion?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Ms. Tokar, how are you?
Back again. Mayor, Commissioners, and city staff, thank you so much on behalf of United Way Broward County, Mission United's program. We are thrilled, more than thrilled, uh, to be standing here and, uh, bringing this pilot program to this great city. We have already known, uh, the veteran affairs and, uh, its, uh, passion, the city's passion for the veterans, uh, because there's already a lot of great stuff going on, and that's been recognized. And so thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, for, for believing in it and listening to it as we kind of muddled through the conversation to even be here this evening. So, um, if I, if you don't mind, I would love to just offer, uh, for the community's sake, a reiteration of the few items that we're going to be working on together. And that is the, the calculation of the veteran population living within the city, identifying veteran-owned businesses within the city, distinguish the employers that are hiring veterans and are, are friendly to that, develop a plan to engage veteran-owned businesses, owners, employees who hire, and, um, the population to stay in communication with them, and we will provide the support to partner with you on all these items through Mission United. Why this is important, when we talked about it, uh, with staff, uh, prior to this evening, a couple of things came up that I want to leave you with. Communication is key. I sit on a FDVA State Council, um, for, uh, Veteran Affairs, and the number one priority we have throughout the state is finding veterans. Communication, providing them with services, much-needed services, and communication with them. Without that, we can't do our job, and we can't take care of them. They've given so much, and we really want to make sure that they have their due diligence back. Uh, Mr. Ken Jude, who's in the building this evening, is a former director of Mission United, and we're really proud of our veterans and all that they do beyond Mission United. This will also provide us the numbers and the calculations and the communications with our veteran population to move forward with some grant funding to better service them, and also legislation. I'm the public policy chair, and I lobby on a regular basis specifically for the veteran population of our state. So thank you for believing in the project. We're really excited to get started, and if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Tokar. Commissioner Castillo?
Mayor, if I may?
Hold on, I'll get to you. Commissioner Castillo?
Yes. Uh, when this great item came forward the first time, we talked about creating a Veterans' Advisory Board to help flesh this out, and I think there was a, a great deal of, of understanding that how, how helpful that would be to get our citizens actually involved in bringing this plan forward. Mr. Dodge or Mr. City Attorney, when will that, uh, uh, item come forward? How will that item come forward so that we can start talking about how to create this, uh, board and, uh, um, make appointments and so forth, so that we can get the, the ball rolling on this?
Mr. Dodge?
If I can respond, Mayor. To the extent that the mayor and commission, uh, in, in a sense, directed us to create by ordinance, I suspect the advisory board to which you refer, we would certainly be a, a, a meaningful to bring something back to you shortly for that purpose.
I look forward to it, and, uh, hopefully, hopefully it'll be on the agenda soon, and I think it'll be a great, uh, uh, addition to make this, take the next step beyond, beyond this great first step, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Tokar.
Yes, sir.
Nearly 10 years ago, uh, you invited me to, uh, go downtown and sit with Mission, uh, Mission United in its, like, incubator stage.
Well, you're 10 years old, yes.
It was 10 years, yes. It's been 10 years.
Yes.
And from that, as a result of that, just, you know, the, the short time I was, I was there, uh, I brought forward the, uh, Veterans' Job Fair Employment Expo that Director Jay Schechter has, and his staff has done amazing jobs throughout the years. And of course, our transition housing at Howard Foreman. So when you approached me about this pilot program, you know, you had me, you had me at hello, right? Um, I'm looking forward to seeing Pembroke Pines and its citizenry and commission to set and lead by example, but we're unable to lead without your leadership, and I just want to thank you for everything that you've done over the years. So I'm happy to support the item, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Good?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, uh, I, uh, 100% support this item. I think, uh, we have some very good, uh, people who are behind it. Um, I.
Turn your mic up.
Did I get shot off?
They still have you down, as I was saying.
I went over my three-second limit. I apologize. But I, I just want to say that, um, thank you very much, uh, for, for bringing this forward to, uh, Commissioner Schwartz, allowing this to be brought before us, and you know that you will have my support in everything that you do in this. Thank you.
And, and I want to thank all of our commissioners for being really involved, and we've got parking spaces, veterans-only. Commissioner Good initiated. Uh, we've got housing that we've initiated and helped, uh, for veterans. Veterans are people that need our services because they've given us theirs.
Yes.
So whatever you need, this city's behind you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, item 13. I know, I'm going to do it. All those, and, uh, City Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, um.
That's a good one, Mayor.
Okay, so consent is over. Let's go to quasi additional agenda ordinances or resolutions?
Number 19, Mayor.
Second reading, oh, yeah. Motion to ratify the city management. Motion to ratify the city manager's approval of an emergency purchase to re-implement sewer lift station number three in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This was passed, nineteen. I'm reading the agenda.
Was it nineteen? Commissioner Good?
The attorney told me to read it.
What are you talking about?
Yes, no, this was passed on consent. Okay, we did. That's what I thought. All right. Quasi-dedicial agenda, ordinances and resolutions, second reading ordinances, first reading ordinances, resolutions, item twenty.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number twenty for the record is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three R dash ten, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the Highway Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement, that's the MOA, between the City of Pembroke Pines and the Florida Department of Transportation, known as the FDOT. Attached here to is Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, providing for mobility improvements on Seventy-Second Avenue, directing the City Clerk to transmit a copy of the resolution to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, known as the NPO, and to the FDOT, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item number twenty on the floor, twenty twenty-three R dash ten. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion? Moved by the Vice Mayor?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Good. Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. So this resolution applies to, I'm told, bicycle lanes on Seventy-Second Avenue. What else does it include? I'd just like it on the record.
Okay. City Attorney?
Maybe staff may have a better answer as to what the actual improvements would be.
Mr. Kennedy?
Carl would have that answer.
You want to come down and talk about this beautiful, wonderful item?
Thank you, Mayor.
That's happening for our great city.
Good evening, Carl Kennedy, City Engineer. Yes, this memorandum with DOT concerns widening bicycle lane addition and sidewalks where they're missing on Seventy-Second. And this is only for the area from Ninth, Southwest Ninth Street, south of Pembroke Road, because we've already done the portion from Ninth Street up to Johnson.
And no other items?
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, I got Commissioner Schwartz first. Go ahead.
Thank you. Unrelated but related, Commissioner Good. I had sent over an email to the city manager earlier this week regarding Seventy-Second, requesting solar lighting for walking paths and that sort of thing. Mr. Kennedy, is that going to be able to move forward without this? Can we light up for safety purposes earlier?
Um, yeah, it's all right. We can do whatever we like in there.
Okay, so they're basically looking for solar downlighting just for jogging and just to be able to brighten up the area a little bit. It's been an item that's been out there for a while. Certainly, with the Border Patrol coming down, anything north of that area would be primed to be lit up.
I'll highlight it at the NPO meeting as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy, before you go away. It also mentions in here that there will be some construction of minor drainage improvements. And I just want to make sure that that's on the record, also that that is it. And I'd like to hear you explain a little bit what they might be looking for in that, because it is one of the items here.
Um, they'll be putting the swales back to where they originally were designed, you know, to hold water. And they will be installing some exfiltration trench if it's needed for the areas, which they're widening the asphalt, so if there's a need to retain that water, they'll do that when they finish the design.
Okay, cool. I just want to make sure that that was spoken to on the record. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Good? Did you need Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You're not getting away.
Thank you. Now, so I, um, I am, I'm a little confused on this project. I mean, I do support it, but I'm just a little confused. I know that we just completed, you know, through the same program, a project that actually went from Ninth Street, and it went north past Pines Boulevard up to what Sheridan or somewhere?
Johnson.
To Johnson Street. You know, same project, right? Bike lanes, drainage, and widening.
The whole project was designed, and then they took it out because of the sewer-ing of the area in South Pines Village, so they're doing it under another project.
Okay, so it is that the DOT are doing the CEI and all the design work and everything? We're not responsible for anything other than to say, hey, we agreed to this, right?
They're doing the design, the CEI, taking care of all the.
Okay, so then that's the second question I have then, too, is because they did pull that project because it did interrupt, you know, that was originally intended to go all the way to Pembroke Road.
Yeah, to Pembroke. They had it designed already.
And then a delay was held up because of Broward County, that's the Broward County Service Area that's going to do water and sewer there. Is there any expectation on timing of when this project is going to even start?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I think that this project will get going in the next nine to twelve months.
Okay, so I'd like to get a little bit of responsiveness back to that. I mean, I don't know that it can begin in nine to ten months only because if Broward County is doing their sewer-ing work, that means we're going to have to wait until that project's complete before they even do anything on this road. So I'd like to get a little bit of a timeline, if you can, regarding.
I'll get that from them. It includes work along State Route Seven, so that's an area that I'm not familiar with, so I'll find out.
What work is including State Route Seven? Is that the utility work?
Uh, no, the work that, the mobility improvements along State Route Seven, you know, that are programmed, that they folded this portion of our project into that project, so it'll go with that project.
Okay, so, interesting, that's a real kind of large separation. I mean, four forty-one isn't even in our city.
Two miles away.
Yeah, so, but I can understand why they may have done that because of the separation and having to tag it to a project, et cetera, so forth and so on. But I really would like to get a bit of a timeline, you know, A, with, you know, what is the utility work anticipated, because there is a conversation. I'd like to have my colleagues in regards to that project for the utility work. But secondarily would be, when is this road then going to be done? Because I do have a number of residents that sort of, you know, why did we not get that benefit that our neighbors got? So it's a question that needs to be answered.
Yeah.
If you could provide that, I would be very.
They wouldn't install it.
There were some things that the neighbors didn't have. That's why they did it, from my understanding. But we'll find out. We'll make sure we get the DOT generally.
Yeah, we'll find out from the.
All right.
From the mayor.
Further discussion. Hearing and call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Director, Mayor and Commissioner, the permanent number is thirty-eight eighteen, three eight one eight.
Okay, item twenty-one, City Clerk, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number twenty-one is a resolution, motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three R dash eleven, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, the city clerk, and the finance director to sign vouchers and checks, to make deposits and withdrawals, and to authorize transactions on investments pursuant to the city's investment policy ordinance, and as provided for by law, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item number twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three R dash eleven on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Move. Who was that?
So moved.
Who was that? Commissioner Castillo? Let's say your names, because they didn't change mine. The names are on this board. Commissioner Castillo moved it?
Aye.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, the permanent number is number thirty-eight nineteen for the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. How about write reports of ladies representatives? Tomorrow night dinner at the league at sunrise, in sunrise, at the Civic Center? We'll be there. Would you like to all come by?
Yes.
Report to the manager?
I'd like to.
The answer is yes.
Oh, I'm not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Slow down.
Sorry.
Just a snippet, Charlie.
See, these are all, can you turn off her mic, please?
Here, I'll turn it off.
Okay, so like I was saying, we're having a dinner tomorrow night at the Civic Center.
We're having for dinner tomorrow.
Okay. Manager?
Check in.
Yes, Mayor.
Check in.
Do you have a report?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, at your direction, I did have an opportunity to speak to the Commission Auditor, and the Commission Auditor will be working on that issue regarding investments and should have an answer within, hopefully, two to three weeks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Just briefly, I recently distributed to you some confidential and privileged litigation information, which we can discuss under separate cover individually, but it was sent out today for your review and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor? Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo?
Mr. Gordon, were you going to request a shade meeting?
I, for the record, I would ask for one on the record this evening only in the context of not knowing the exact date, but to the extent that calendars permit, I would be asking for a shade meeting under Chapter two eighty-six of the Florida statutes in the case of the City of Pembroke Pines versus Consolidated Edison, which is currently pending in the Circuit Court. And by appropriate motion, Mayor and Commissioner, we can have you approve that, and we can look at the date as our special counsel would direct.
I'll move that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Discussion? Call the roll, please. Call the roll on the City Attorney's item.
I'm scheduling this, and approving a shade meeting at my request for legal, for advice from the Mayor and Commissioner.
Got it.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, item twenty-two, Vice Mayor Seifel?
Thank you, Mayor. Seifel will move to request the City Commission of Pembroke Pines approve a sponsorship of five thousand dollars in support of the Broward Lake City's sixty-sixth Annual Gala scheduled for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. I know this is something that we do, we do every year for the Broward Lake.
The motion by, oh, did you move that?
He did. I did, and then he stopped.
Okay, Vice Mayor, move the second by Commissioner Schwartz. Discussion?
Yes, Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo, discussion?
We do this every year. Mr. Manager, is there just, is there a way to just put this in the budget? So we don't have to, so we don't have to do this anymore?
We can include the item, I don't know what the dollar amount we, each year, but we can estimate it, and we can include it in the budget, so it would not have to be brought back here.
I would think the more of these, the more of these go into the budget, the better off we'll be. That's my opinion.
All right. Call the roll, please.
May I ask who seconded it, the item?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yep.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you all. Thank you all for a great meeting. Don't forget Saturday.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, at the conclusion of this meeting, we will be readjourning in room A one oh one.
I know. Okay, everybody, great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
All right. We got to get these things fixed. Yeah.